This meeting of the Gads and City Council, I come to order, Chair calls on Ivan Nevin for the real call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams is somewhere in the building, as well as Councilman Avery. Councilman Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Councilman Reed is also somewhere in the building. We do have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we just thank you for the blessing of life. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today, take care of city business. We pray for wisdom and knowledge that you'll just be still on the council today, and the decisions they have to make that will affect this entire city. Be with the mayor and his administration. Give them wisdom. And God, we just pray that everything we do today will bring glory to you and only you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee meeting, work sessions, and the City Council meeting held on April the 29th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the weeks of April the 23th through May the 1st.
So moved.
And May the 2nd through the 8th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of accounts for both weeks.
If there's nobody here from the mayor's office, so if he is here, we'll let him speak. Aid is unfinished business. An ordinance amending fiscal year 2014 budget. This ordinance was presented on April the 29th to the first reading. It reflects the receipt and appropriation of the condemn of care grant, and the amount is $9,000. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
None, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 106 Pineapple Street in District 4. The last known owners are the state of Alabama and Tony Smith. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves a burn house. We started our process in September of last year. There are no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution authorizing application for a grant through the Justice Department. This is a justice assistance grant to be shared with Edgewall County, and the total amount is $43,513. City's portion is 32,701, and the county's is 10,812. And it's for to purchase body cameras for their patrol division. This time, we'll allow the opportunity for the public input. Is there anyone who would like to speak in regard to this grant?
Mr. President, I know the public is having an opportunity to speak. Let me understand that this grant is to buy cameras?
I don't know what it's for, for the chief.
I'm asking the chief, about body armor or what?
Body cameras.
The body cameras is what the county is going to spend their money on. We have to define in our grant application what the money's going to be spent for. The county's is for body cameras, ours is for computers and computer software updates.
Okay. It brings to the question, because I was going to speak on this a little bit later, but I guess I can ask the question now. So I am to assume that both city and county law enforcement officers have body cameras?
I can't speak for the county.
I'm sorry. I know you can't, but I'm just making a statement since, and you'll find out later on when I have my closing statement, you'll find out why I'm mentioning that. I just want people to understand that the county is purchasing body cameras, okay? Just want to be sure. Call for the vote.
Chair, entertain a motion, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution appointing members to the Harrelson Avenue Architectural Review Board. They appoint, this appoints Susan Griffin and reappoints Dennis Tarkington, Kathy Mylum, for terms expiring September the 15th, 2016. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
We'd just like to say thank you to people who serve on these boards, especially this very important board for our community. And of course, they serve at no monetary value whatsoever, they just devote their time. We appreciate them when they do that.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution authorizing agreement between the city and the Alabama Department of Transportation. This is for a permit for the maintenance of the traffic control signal at the intersection of Meagan Boulevard and Sixth Street North. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll start out on this end. I have a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It is a resolution authorizing a warden to bid to green the turf and tractors for 2009 a newer Traplex mower.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is for turf, this is for mowings at the golf course, where it is in the budget, so we're not going out of the budget for this, for these funds, to help maintain our golf course.
Any other discussion?
We'd like to say that we got a good report from the golf course financially this month, about a $20,000 profit for the month, so looking good out there.
That is, that is good.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of items, the first of which that I'd like to ask for consideration today under new business is a resolution authorizing application and administrative, administration of an Adecco grant on behalf of three agencies. I'd like to ask that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, as the resolution states, this is authorizing the city to serve as the recipient in terms of the application of this grant. This is the emergency shelter grant that we have historically received on behalf of public service agencies. The agencies recognized in this resolution are Salvation Army, 13th Place, The Love Center, and EBA Mission Center.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Second item that I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today is a resolution authorizing agreement with J.R. Wilburn and Associates for a 2040 long-range transportation update for the Gadsden-Edgewall MPO.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a, again, this is the long-range plan, or a long-term plan, or a long-range plan for the Gadsden-Edgewall MPO. As many of you know, that's an organization that's established to administer many of the transportation projects that are undertaken within Edgewall County. So the city's portion of this is actually 15,000, or the local match is actually 15,000, and the total fee is $77,480.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I do have an ordinance that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning, is the ordinance amending fiscal year 2014 budget for the installation of three safe rooms. So I ask for unanimous consent to consider this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consent.
Now, last, ask for passage, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is for three safe rooms, and the amount is $89,985. And this money will be reimbursed to the city by FEMA when these safe rooms are built. I think they accommodate about 50 people, don't they, each one of them?
Per.
So that's all I have.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other?
Mr. President, I have two. First one, I have to ask for unanimous consent to consider is resolution authorizing acceptance of conditional deed of gift from the United States of America represented by the U.S. Army Takom Life Cycle Management Command of an M60 series tank to be displayed at the Colonel Ole Miss Park, Patriots Park on Knott Lilla Road.
You have a second.
Second.
Move to adopt.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now I'll move to adopt.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. I was rereading that.
You've already made, you've already made your discussion.
Well, see, I cycle about once every three months, so you're lucky.
No, he has plenty to, he has plenty to.
I think the tank is already in place, right?
I think the tank is already up there. Anybody who's been to Knott Lilla Park lately have seen the tank, so what we're doing is just accepting it from the United States government.
Any other?
We need to vote.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And the other resolution I have for unanimous consent today is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sell a 1994 E1 pumper to the Micaville Volunteer Fire Department for $25,000.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I think it's self-explanatory, it's $25,000 for a 94 unit, yes. Where's this located? Micaville? Yeah. Just on the other side of, wherever. Okay. I don't know where Micaville is.
I don't know where it works right now.
Anyway, it's a lot of here, group that needs a pumper real bad, they don't have one, and that's a good price on the, on the, on the pumper, so.
Well, in my infinite wisdom, it's a little bit near Heflin, Alabama.
I don't know where it works right now.
I tell you what, if it wasn't for I, I wouldn't look more stupid than I really am. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
I just never heard of it, okay.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other?
I think he has some proclamations now. He has some proclamations, we want to acknowledge him.
I will in a minute.
Get back to me.
I got one here for authorizing, accepting the conditional deed of gift from the United States of America.
Yeah, I've worked on that. That's the one he just did.
That's the tank.
That's the one you did?
Yeah, he did. I think that's all of them.
That's all.
Okay. Yes, there was two for J.R. Wilburn. We did that. Okay, Department of Reports Committee's session. Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to pass around some pictures. I just want to thank the mayor and the council for allowing us to pursue the state high school bass fishing tournament that we just had this past weekend. So you're going to be seeing some pictures of where we fed the kids and the sponsors and all on Thursday night. You'll see maybe blast off on one of the mornings, and then you'll see the weigh-ins that we had on Friday afternoon, Saturday afternoon at the amphitheater. It was a very successful event. We had 220 boats in the fishing tournament, and I want to thank the police department for their assistance, public works department for their assistance, all our volunteers that we had that helped out, there were several of those that helped out, and then the Parks and Rec staff. I mean, it took just about all of our staff to pull this thing off, but it went very well, and I want to thank the Gadsden State's fishing team, they helped us on putting the fish in the holding tanks and getting them back into the Couso River without losing too many of them before we got them back in the water. So it was a very successful event. I'm not sure how much they caught on Saturday, but Friday, I know they had 1,200 pounds of fish that weighed in. I don't think they quite reached that limit on Saturday, but Friday, we stood in the rain and got wet, so, but no lightning, no thunder, no tornadoes, and then on Saturday, we got the sun out. So we had all gamuts of the weather that you can actually do this in, so it went very well. And I just want to thank y'all for allowing us to do this event, and we will be trying to get it back in the future.
I didn't see any pictures of the traffic jams.
I didn't hear about any traffic jams. Robert, I guess they called you.
No, you didn't, you didn't try to get the city hall undaubed on Friday.
Yeah, Friday was, Friday was very tough because of that, the time of the day.
But it was good, though, I'm not complaining.
That's right.
It's great to see all that traffic.
And the police department did well on getting them over there as quick as they could. On Fridays, at the area we were using, as you well know, was probably one of the most traveled areas in the, in the city for the week. And then Saturday, it was a little bit better because the people were not at work, and it went a little bit smoother. But everything went good, the organization was happy, and we were very happy.
Yeah, we like, we like to have traffic jams like that.
That's right, that's right, looks good.
Very good.
Karen, are you saying that we're trying to have this same event again next year?
We won't get it next year. It's already, well, I say we won't, it's already verbally been awarded to the city that we beat out this year, but we are going to be, we may have, they have a one-day event leading up to this, and we are putting in a bid to, for that event. It will not be, this was the state championship, but they qualify through these other legs, and we will go after one of them, but we probably won't be able to get the state championship for another year, probably have to miss a year. But we're going to go after it. It was, it was very successful, the hotels were happy, the restaurants. I think the organization went to eat on Friday night, and they said it took them 10 restaurants before they were able to get to one that said they could accommodate them. So that's what we want to hear.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
That's what I just said. Like the cameras.
Okay, is there any other reports?
Shane.
Shane?
Oh, yeah.
This is the mayor's report, this is the junior mayor.
Is Betty Willoughby here today? Come on up, Betty. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there's a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and to protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and have a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore be it resolved that Sherman Gaitan, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, does hereby proclaim May 2014 as Mental Health Month, specifically Mind Your Health, in the City of Gadsden, Alabama. The mayor does also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the City of Gadsden to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps that our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
We are an agency, Mental Health America of Edgewall County. We're housed in the Family Success Center, and we are an agency with United Way, and we do everything we can to promote good mental health. We are a navigator for people with mental illness. We do classes for people with stress and anger management, domestic violence prevention, and parenting classes, and we also partner with CED to take care of people's needs who are suffering with mental illness. And every year, we host Operation Santa Claus, that we try to get a gift for everyone in the county who is suffering with mental illness. Our heart is to help stamp out the stigma of mental health in Edgewall County. Thank you.
I have another one here today, Jim Johnson and Matthew Slater. Gentlemen, if you'll come forward. This is Motorcycle Awareness Month as well. Yeah. Whereas motorcycles are increasingly used as a regular means of transportation, and whereas the motorcycle is an energy-efficient vehicle that reduces fuel consumption, traffic and parking congestion, and whereas the motorcycle is an important form of transportation for commuting, touring, and recreation, and whereas as a matter of safety, it is necessary to develop appropriate driving habits to handle these vehicles on roadways, and whereas over the past 10 years, motorcycle fatalities have increased 150% as reported in the U.S. Department of Transportation's Fatality Analysis Report, and whereas to prevent injuries and deaths on the roadways, motorcyclists and motorists must be vigilant in their efforts to share the road and ensure the safety of everyone, and whereas Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month raises public awareness for a lifetime of safe motorcycle riding. Now therefore be it resolved that Sherman Gaitan, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, does hereby proclaim May as Motorcycle Awareness Month.
I'd like to thank Mayor Gaitan, City Council, and the citizens of Gadsden, again, in issuing this proclamation. Alabama ranks 32nd motorcycle registrations. In 2012, Edgewall County had a total of 5,091 vehicular crashes, 53 involving motorcycles, resulting in two deaths. The same year, Alabama experienced 2,072 motorcycle crashes with 97 deaths. This year, we have had two motorcycle crashes involving local residents. Gary Pierce is still recovering, and Ronnie and Kim Turner are up and about. We need to be more diligent and aware. Put the phones down, obey the traffic signs, and just drive. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a couple of comments during the mayor's session, if that's okay. So, you want me to go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay. We don't normally address letters to the editor, but there was one that ran last week entitled "Shortsided," that was aimed regarding the Black Creek Trail and the parking issue that we do have on Black Creek Road near the intersection of Tuscaloosa Avenue and the Edgewall County Rescue Squad. As I said, the article is entitled "Shortsided," and there's some references to getting nothing done until you raise Cain. And I do take issue with this, we've not heard from this gentleman in the past, and this is a, I think this is a good problem to have. Anytime you have parking problems, something you need to address, but it means that it has been a success, as is shown in downtown Gadsden. The intent when we designed the trail was for there to be two, a beginning and an end, the beginning being Knott Lilla Falls Park there at the Wedding Chapel where there is ample parking, and the softball complex and tennis complex where there is also ample parking. But the unintended effect of the trail becoming urbanized or joining the neighborhood there is that people don't necessarily enjoy the very last half mile or so. So they have begun to make their own parking in what would not necessarily be appropriate or approved places. So that's not something that we necessarily anticipated, however, we do have a couple of options that we are currently pursuing to alleviate the parking issue there, one being 10 to 12 additional spots at the Edgewall County Rescue Squad building, which we were, we were about to actually undertake that project, and Councilman Cannon reminded me that we do not have a lease on that portion of property. So we were, we are and may have finished a legal description for our part of the Rescue Squad lot, so that we can make those modifications and have, like I said, an immediate 10 to 12 parks that are right there in the problem area. The other thing, we have also been contacted by a property owner on the other side of the trail, which would be immediately accessible, and the property owner wishes to discuss selling their property to the city, which could also be. selling their property to the city, which could also be additional parks. So I think we have a couple of good options there that we can use to alleviate this problem. Also, there was a reference to the area being forgotten. In that immediate vicinity, we are in the process of designing a pipe replacement project to the tune of approximately $100,000 in addition to the everyday ditch cleaning, grass cutting, and nuisance and abatement that goes on in that area. So I hardly think you can say that it's forgotten. So just wanted to let the council and the citizens know that we do take these articles seriously and that we do have plans to address all these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben, you want to start?
Yeah, the only thing I have is a short report on the Public Safety Committee meeting this morning and last week concerning the smoking ordinance, proposed smoking ordinance. We'll be taking that up. We'll make our recommendations probably this week, and it'll go into pre-council hopefully next week. Checking seat. Well, I think under the circumstances, if you want to speak at that, am I right, you would have to call your office on a Friday before to get on the agenda?
Our regular rules for people who want to address the council, they would apply in the clerk's office before 2:00 p.m. on Friday. The public speaking is at the end of the agenda. So I mean to keep that in mind. If it's a day that an item is appearing on the agenda, you would actually vote prior to the public speaking.
Okay. Is that ordinance dealing with a public hearing on it, or is it just an ordinance? It's not a public hearing ordinance?
I'm not aware. Mr. Attorney, can you help me out? I'm not aware of an actual requirement that this be a public hearing. I haven't run across anything. We'll be glad to research that further to make sure. And the council could certainly choose to make it a public hearing if you wish to do that.
Well, you could. The only reason I went ahead and said that was if it turns out there's not a public hearing, then at least whoever wanted to speak could be heard in pre-council or council, whatever. But we'll look into that and see on a public, if it's a public hearing ordinance.
If it's not a public hearing, then they just need to come to pre-council.
That's what I'm talking. That's why I said, yes, get that set up for it. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also just like to also emphasize the fact, and thank you, Councilman Reed, that we are working on a smoke-free ordinance for the city of Gadsden. And this morning, it is in committee to be reported to the full council as to the recommendations of what ordinance, how the ordinance should read and encumber, what all it encompasses. We will be presenting that to hopefully the full council on next Tuesday. And we appreciate the public's input, as we had a room full this morning at the committee meeting. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but there were probably 25 people that said they were in favor of a smoke-free environment in the city of Gadsden, and only one person said they were not in favor. So and then if you've looked at the Gadsden Times' polls, you know, that are there, taken by the Gadsden Times, 70% of the people in the city are in favor of some type of an ordinance guiding us as to where we should be smoking to make it publicly free of smoke. And the other thing that I have is that if you listen to the gentleman that was, has been presented the proclamation for May being Motorcycle Awareness Month, he made the statement that we continue to say all the time, put the phone down and pay attention and drive your vehicle, because you cause accidents when you're trying to text and talk and drive at the same time. And it's against the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everyone about, this is the third Saturday of the month. We'll have music at the Albon City Gazette, straight shots will be there, Coos River Bach will be singing, there'll be free food and free drinks for everybody to come on out and enjoy it. Starts at 6:00 and ends about 9:00 or 10:00. I do want to remind everybody to be safe for summer school. Be out in a few weeks. And just kind of the kids are getting antsy right now to get out of school, and just make sure you watch after them when you're going down the road. They don't run out in front of you or something. Just drive carefully through there so the kids will be safe. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick items. Again, I know Mother's Day was a couple of days ago, but do want to extend the Mother's Day greeting to all the mothers in the city and those in attendance today for sure. And we always want to make sure we acknowledge and appreciate and show our appreciation for those mothers that sacrifice so much for each of us. So thank you for all you do. Councilman Stewart commented on it earlier, and I just want to expound. We did realize some, actually, it stands as consecutive months, both March and April, some good financial feedback from our golf course. And it kind of really speaks to, I'm proud of it for the simple fact that both of those developments, both the golf course and the East Gadsden development, the River Trace development, are in District 2. And I just had to throw that out there. That's important. And the reality is that one has definitely benefited the other. And I think it's important to highlight that. You know, whether it was by design or not, the impact and the result is pretty clear. We're going to realize some meaningful activity as it relates to the River Trace development. A lot of good things are going on there. And what it did is it eliminated a golf course, a private golf course, and many of those players now have moved to our municipal course. And again, those guys have also forced our municipal course to be creative in terms of marketing. So a lot of the same programs that you see with the Trent Jones Trail are being implemented through the municipal course. So it just created a good situation where, you know, the service got better and we're creating some more traffic for the city. So these are all good things. And I can tell you, I tend to be pretty even-handed when I address any situation. And I can tell you, I was very critical of where we were financially with our golf course a few years ago, because it basically stank. I mean, it was a bad situation. But thanks to some good decision-making, and I think better management, better targeted management, we've gotten much, much better. So again, those are all good things. I just wanted to make sure we highlighted that. The, I guess the only other thing that I wanted to bring up, and there's some things I'll bring up at a later date that I have here, but the only other thing I wanted to bring up is that we had, you know, I don't, I guess, an unusually tense situation in the pre-council meeting this morning. You've heard many of my counterparts here speak to the fact that we do a lot of our talking upstairs, and that's why the meeting here is more of a formality of making sure that we cast on the record our vote for specific items. So there's no need for us, just because we're on TV, to get down here and do a whole lot of talking. And so again, that's important to note, because I had a relative actually comment on, you know, us not seeing a whole lot on television. Well, you know, there's a reason for that. But I will say this. I will say this. You know, again, in my very first meeting four years ago, one of the first things that I asked for and spoke about was civil discourse. You know, and I, you know, I got a chuckle out of this group, because I, you know, I said, you know, I think one of the comments I got back was, well, where are you going to get that? You know, that was one of the comments. And I haven't given up on civil discourse. I can tell you that there is nothing wrong with an individual raising their concern, raising their issue, raising whatever concerns them as it relates to the city. But I think it's important that when you do that, you do it respectfully. And conversely, you know, it's important for us as a council to be respectful when these people are talking. And so I want to make a plea to this council in our pre-council setting. I think we do a very good job of it downstairs. But I think it's important for us to remind people of the rules of engagement in terms of when they make commentary. A lot of times, people don't know that they can't call a name. And so I think it's important to remind them, because calling names upstairs or down here is not something that we can accept. We can't accept it. And I'm not advocating for that in any stretch. But when an individual makes that mistake, it's not the duty or the responsibility, nor is it okay for a council person to shut them down. And I don't think that's important. And I don't, I wouldn't want that if I were a private citizen who was presenting a concern. So again, I want us to be sure that we are open to civil discourse. When it becomes disruptive and when it becomes uncivil, then I think we have a means to shut it down. But until then, people ought to have the space to say, to state their opinion and state their issue. Thank you.
We had a very interesting pre-council meeting prior to that committee, State Committee about smoking. I don't smoke. Wish no one smoked. But I have heard from a lot of people who are thinking we might be overreaching with some of our thoughts on smoking as far as what you can do in your home, what you can do in your office. So I have some questions about that. And of course, we'll be looking at a final draft. Maybe those will be worked out. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a community meeting scheduled for this Thursday, but so much is going on now, and some things have happened, so I'm going to have to cancel that and reschedule hopefully maybe next Tuesday. So I'll ask Jenny, if she can, to get that worked out for me next Tuesday evening. Public Housing is having their steam program out at Carver, and I thought I'd yield to them. I think they'll start at 5:30, and I didn't want to rush through, because there's quite a few things going on. So I want to make that announcement that we won't meet this Thursday, but we'll do it on Tuesday. Upstairs. They weren't talking about me, by the way, folks. But I do have some issues as to what was discussed upstairs. And I pointed out earlier, we had an individual who came before the pre-council to talk about an issue. I had three, I repeat, I had three calls this weekend on this, primarily similar to the same issue. And the reason I pointed out earlier that the county was purchasing cameras and recorders with their money is that, and one of the incidents, it was my understanding that a couple of officers overheard saying that I forgot to turn my camera on. And I'm not sure if there was, this was the task force. And it's my understanding, again, I don't know who make up the task force, but I understand it's county and city and other municipalities too, I guess. I'm not sure. If I'm wrong, somebody help me with this task force. I guess I'm okay to ask you, Chief, if you don't want to answer about who makes up the task force, but it's other departments besides the city of Gadsden. Am I safe to say that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I also want to say that if the other departments don't have cameras and recording instruments, then I would hope that our officers wouldn't participate unless their cameras and recorders were on. Because when incidents happen, the general public don't know in those task forces what department they work for. Everybody assumes they work for the city of Gadsden, and that's the farthest thing from the truth. So I got a bunch of calls about the city of Gadsden police officers this weekend, I mean, this past week, in an incident where a gentleman was reportedly beat. I don't know. Based on the pictures and information I've got so far, he do have some injuries, but what happened, I don't know. But I guarantee you, if those officers had their cameras on and recorders, we would know what happened. We would know why the incident happened. And all I'm saying is that the public needs to be aware that all officers who work for the city of Gadsden that's out there interacting with the public should have a recorder. And undoubtedly, based on what I just heard, all officers who work for the county should have one. So there should be no excuse that nobody recorded an incident when the task force was there. And I hope that don't be the case in this situation, particularly since there's been some allegations made of some wrongdoing. And so, you know, my biggest thing is to make sure that everybody's protected, not only the citizenry, but our officers. You know, they get a bad enough rap as it is, and we've got a decent police department. I try to tell people that. Some folks say I'm hard on the police department. Well, my brother works for the police department, so I ain't hard on my brother. I don't care what y'all say. But you've got one or two folks down there who create a problem for everybody. We got one or two bad councilmen, and everybody talks about all these bad councilmen up here. Well, I ain't bad. I don't know about the rest of them. But, you know, we can't start grouping folks, and we need to be able to point out those folks. But all I'm saying is, what we've tried to put in place is a mechanism to make sure that everybody is above board and equal. So hopefully, this incident that happened, we'll find out that who was in the right and who was in the wrong. That's all I have. I'm going to get off my soapbox. Just want to.
I'd just like to interject one point. And I think it's important to note, and I think, and I may be mistaken, but I think I'm speaking, you know, for, or I'm echoing the sentiment of this council. I can tell you that I had a conversation with someone who worked with this city 16 years ago, and the comment that that person made was that, you know, that person commented about how much better that they see our police chief and police department being. They were commenting on how many bad chiefs we've gone through as a city. And all I could do was shake my head in agreement. We've gone through some bad ones, but I think we have a very good one. Not just a good one, but a very good one. And Councilman Avery is correct. With police departments, just like with any group, not just police departments, you're going to have some bad eggs. And a lot of times, they are, the group is unfairly demonized because of just a few bad eggs. But I think holistically, I am pleased with the amount of service and response that I get from both the chief and his department. And so I want to say that publicly. I appreciate what they've done. And, you know, we'll address our opportunities. There are going to be opportunities going forward. You're hearing right now from someone who about 12 years ago had to file a civil service complaint. So there will be issues. There will be issues. We just have to address them when they present themselves. I'm sorry.
If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.